Yeah.
Here, Mr. Pelton.
Here.
Here, and Mr. Tucker.
Here.
Your quorum is present. First item on the agenda is A twenty-one-ten J E K Enterprises LLC, Seven Franklin Street, appealing from the decision of the Inspector of Buildings of the City of Revere respecting the determination as to the current use of Seven Franklin Street. As set forth in the order to correct dated January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, it states in pertinent part, either the NB Zone nor any asserted grandfather use of the property supports any of the structures or premises being utilized for a twenty-four-seven business operation, particularly with the movement of noise generated from large vehicles and construction materials.
Good evening. I see that legal counsel is here to represent them, and I believe he will be asking for a motion to continue.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. On through working with Ward Counselor Serena, we're able to have a neighborhood meeting. It lasted for a very long time. A lot of people were heard. A lot of ideas were passed around as to potential mitigation to some of the issues that the neighbors were concerned about. We have a new meeting scheduled for May fourth. Again, it will be a virtual neighborhood meeting, and we hope to, we will, present a package of mitigation measures as recommended by our noise consultant, and then upon which we hope to embark and actually take those measures into account, do them, and then have them retested in order to see what the decibel level would be. The goal is, we know we're not violating any city ordinances at the current level. The goal is to just be a good neighbor and see if we can reduce that decibel level for the betterment of the neighborhood. So we'd ask for our continued, so we can have that meeting on May fourth, and then return to you in the end of May for your next regular meeting. Thank you.
Hey, I don't see anyone else wishing to speak on this. I don't see any hand raised. So I would ask, shall the zoning board of appeals continue this matter to the next ZBA scheduled meeting on Wednesday, May twenty-sixth? Is there a motion?
Yeah, I, I, yes.
Seconded?
Me.
Okay, roll call, please.
Roll call of the zoning board of appeals members. Mr. Bucili, voting yes. Mr. Lemina.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton.
Yes.
Yes, and Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Yes, this matter will be continued to May twenty-sixth.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Yeah.
Good luck there.
Next item on the agenda is application A twenty-one-thirteen, Stephen M. Feranti, twenty-two Pemberton Street, Revere, Mass, seeking a variance of section seventeen-point-one-six-point-two-six-oh F-two of the revised ordinances of the City of Revere, minimum side yard setback for a pool to enable the appellant to install an above-ground pool at twenty-two Pemberton.
And the applicant, the applicant is present. If you could state your name and address for the record. You have to unmute yourself, Stephen.
Are you hearing me? I'm sorry.
Yes, you probably have a phone going as well because we're hearing an echo.
Okay.
You can already have one.
You may have to turn yours. So it's Stephen Feranti, twenty-two Pemberton Street, Revere.
Okay, I believe the.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, sir.
I believe the application speaks for itself, so seeing that it's a public hearing, I'll ask if there's any proponents, anyone in favor. If there's anyone in attendee, please use the raised hand feature and we'll acknowledge you. Seeing and hearing, now I'll close that side of the hearing.
Novoseljki has his hand raised.
I'm sorry, who?
Councilman Novoseljki.
Oh, okay. All right, well, that didn't see it.
Mr. Chairman, knowing, knowing Stephen very well, I'm sure, you know, he's doing the best for his family, and I would be in favor of this, even though it's not my district. You know, I know Stephen personally, and I'd like to be supportive of him. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing and hearing, now I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing, now I'll close that side of the hearing. Any members wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Is the board, I mean, the councilor of the city, the councilor is on board on this?
This is, actually, I believe. It is Richie Serena, and he is on board with this.
Okay.
I don't see anyone else raising hands or in opposition, or I did speak to the abbot to the left, which is directly affected by this yesterday, and a gentleman said that he has no problem with this at all. So any other members wish to speak?
Well, we can roll call.
There's one more. I'm sorry, we just had a hand raised. Let's see. Looks like, name is Ally.
Okay, Ally, if you could state your name, if you could unmute and state your name and address for the record, please.
My address, eleven Nahant Avenue. I am, my house close to this house we're talking about. Fifteen Nahant Avenue.
Wrong, wrong one.
Wrong. Different application.
No, that's a different.
No, my name is Abdul Ghani, Abdo. Ah, Ali is my stepson. He just opened his telephone. But.
Tell Abdo he's not on yet. You're not on yet, sir. We're talking about something else. We're speaking on another matter right now, so just stand by.
Well, let's. Okay, yeah, I. Hang on.
No problem. Okay, seeing and hearing no other, no one else, I would simply ask that we have a roll call on a motion to approve.
Chairman, did you want to add those standard boilerplate conditions in?
Yes, if you would.
Okay, I'll put those into the record. One, if the rights by this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of this variance, the rights shall lapse. Two, this variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance and plan in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits documents, document recording numbers and dates to the city clerk and building inspector of the city of Revere. And three, the appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit. Now, on the question, shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested for twenty-two Pemberton Street in accordance with the plan on file, subject to the conditions of site plan review?
Roll call.
Roll call of the members of the zoning board of appeals. Mr. Bucili, voting yes. Mr. Lemina.
Yes.
Voting yes. Mr. Lopes.
Yes.
Voting yes. Mr. Pelton.
Yes.
Yes, and Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Yes, the variance has been granted.
Thank you.
Good luck, Stephen.
Yep, good luck, sir.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We can leave the meeting?
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is application A twenty-one-fourteen, Frank and Lisa Barry, forty Stone Street, Revere, Mass, requesting variances of section seventeen-point-two-four-point-oh-one-oh, minimum side yard setback, section seventeen-point-one-six-point-two-six-oh D, maximum height for an accessory structure, and section seventeen-point-one-six-point-two-six-oh F-one, maximum coverage of an accessory structure at the rear yard of the revised ordinances of the city of Revere to enable the appellant to construct a twenty-four-by-twenty-eight garage at forty Stone.
Okay, if the applicant could state his name and address for the record, please.
Frank Barry, forty Stone Street, Revere, Mass.
Your application speaks for itself, but if you'd wish to add anything, you're welcome to do so at this time.
Mr. Tucker, I, I really don't know what to say. I think I tried to fill that out as best I could.
Okay, thank you. Seeing that it's a public hearing, I'll ask if there's any proponents, and if there are, please use the raised hand feature. I do have to say that the ward counselor did speak to the applicant, and he is in favor of this application. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight because he is on another Zoom meeting, which will probably last till around eleven, he told me. Okay, so seeing no one, I see one hand raised. Ira.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, again, what about fine firefighters in the city of Revere, and I just realized where Stone Street was. I didn't realize it was way up in North Revere, near Overlook, but I support him. He has a great family. He's a great guy, and I know he'll do the right thing. So I say, good luck.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing and hearing, now I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents?
Chairman, there's one, Chairman, there's one letter on file from a Russell Torasio, forty-two Stone Street. He says he's not in opposition, but he does have cited some concerns in his letter.
Okay, I don't see any other opponents, no hand raised, and so I would ask if, I'll close that side of the hearing. I'll ask if there's any members that wish to speak. Okay, hearing none, then I would ask, Ashley, if you could read the notes, and then we can continue on with the vote.
Sure. So again, these are standard boilerplate conditions, zoning board of appeals members. One, if the rights authorized by this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of this variance, the rights shall lapse. Two, this variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance and plan in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds, submits document recording numbers and dates to the city clerk and building inspector of the city of Revere. And three, the appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit. On the question, shall the shall the city count, I'm sorry, shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested for forty Stone Street in accordance with the plan on file, subject to the conditions of site plan review? Mr. Bucili, voting yes. Mr. Lemina.
Yes.
Voting yes. Mr. Lopes.
I had a question. The conditions that the guy, the neighbor put up here, is that going to be part of the conditions to build? Russell Torasio.
And we could ask the applicant if he's in agreement with the, the letter that was sent by the abbot.
I, I talked with Russell Sunday about this, and I told him I agreed if by chipping any of the Shirley ledge out caused any cracks in his cement driveway, or if there was any damage to his fence, I'd be more than happy to be a stand-up guy and repair whatever I caused.
Then I'll see if we are on a roll call.
Mr. Lopes.
Yes.
Voting yes. Mr. Pelton.
Yes.
Voting yes. And Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Yes, this variance has been granted. Next item on the agenda is application A twenty-one-fifteen, Nahant LLC, twenty-forty-dash, I'm sorry, ten-forty-dash, ten-forty-eight North Shore Road, Unit B, Revere, Mass, requesting several variances of the revised ordinances of the city of Revere to enable the appellant to raise the existing structure and construct a new building comprising of thirty-eight residential units at thirteen Nahant Avenue.
I see that legal counsel is here representing the applicant. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Carrie Anne Green. I'm an attorney with D'Ambrugio Brown LLP with an address of fourteen Proctor Avenue in Revere. I represent the petitioner Nahant LLC, whose principal is Jamie Russo. Jamie is seeking a variance to construct a five-story contemporary structure with thirty-eight residential units. I won't go into detail on the specific relief he's requesting, but it is detailed in the petition that we filed with the city. This project is in the GB district, which allows for apartment use as a right. So this project is about revitalizing a rundown property in the Shirley Avenue area. I'm going to, if I can, share my.
Hold on, one second.
Share my screen.
Yeah, I forgot. You should be able to go now.
Okay, I think it's letting me. Okay. All right, so I'm just sharing my screen. This is the current structure at the property. As you can see, it's vacant and derelict. It's boarded up, and it's a blight for this neighborhood right now. There have been significant safety issues at this property due to squatting and criminal activity, which is why the property is boarded up. There's also obvious fire safety issues with how the property currently is. Jamie Russo, in conjunction with the ward counselor, Ira Novoseljki, held a community meeting last week, which was well-attended by members of the community, as well as the fire chief and the police chief. The meeting went very well, and the fire chief and police chief are in support of this project, as it will resolve the many safety issues at the property. The neighbors were also excited about the opportunity for this property to be cleaned up. The petitioner, Jamie Russo, opened direct lines of communication with the neighbors to address any concerns that they have now or in the future, any plans to continue to keep those lines open. So now I'm going to share a rendering of the proposed building. So this project provides a fresh start to this property with a new, modern building. The zoning relief requested is in line with other developments in the area. And the majority of the units in this proposed building are studios and one-bedroom units. Jamie has included several two-bedroom units. So with the onset of COVID and remote working, many individuals in the workforce are now specifically looking for two-bedroom units to accommodate office space and working from home. I do want to emphasize that of the thirty-eight units, twenty-seven of them are one-bedrooms and studios, and that there are no three-bedroom units. This is not designed for families. Moreover, for engineering purposes, two-bedroom corner units are often a structural necessity when laying out a building. I also wanted to state that the units are small. The largest unit is approximately six-hundred-and-thirty-eight square feet. The target renters will be young professionals and mixed workforce people who want to live close to the T. The new generation of young professionals are not car-focused and generally prefer to use public transportation, Ubers, Zip Cars, bicycles, things of that nature. This is a transit-oriented property. It's located just a short four-minute walk from Revere Beach T Station, as well as several major bus lines. Jamie Russo has a great reputation in the area for property management and taking proactive measures to address issues. He's renovated and improved countless properties in this area, and has no plans to sell this project, but plans to manage it himself. Beyond the significant benefits to the city in terms of revitalization, increased taxes, and improvement of this property, the neighborhood will also be looking at significant increases in their property values. This project has the support of the city's administration. In your packet, you will have a letter from the city's economic development director in support of the project. Additionally, the ward counselor, Ira Novoseljki, is in support of the project, and he is here tonight to speak in support. This is a great project for the city and would greatly enhance this property by replacing the current blighted, decrepit structure with a new, modern building.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
If you want to continue, I think we can.
No, that's it. I was going to say, thank you.
And I will ask for proponents, and I see that the ward counselor is here, so if he wishes to speak, you may do so.
I do. Can you unshare?
Certainly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I see a director of community development is here also. I want to let everybody know that for the first time, we held a neighborhood meeting, not only live, you know, with the COVID going on, and we also had a Zoom going on. And I can tell you that we had twenty-six people live at La Diciosa on Shirley Ave. In the back, they have a little club, but it's a wide-open space, and everybody was socially distanced. They wore masks. They sanitized their hands, and then we had nineteen people on the Zoom meeting. So we had forty-five people altogether, which was unheard of, as far as I'm concerned, in a neighborhood meeting. And Jamie and Jerry D'Ambrugio's, Jerry was there, and explained everything to everybody. People had questions, and people, they responded to them positively, and the people accepted the positive feedback. The immediate neighbors had complaint, had some concerns, and he said, listen, whatever it's going to take to make you happy, I'm going to do it for you. Tinting windows, putting up fencing that the neighbors wanted, and it was just very, very positive feeling. Out of the whole group, it was, I believe, maybe two or three people that were against it, but, you know, based on, you know, the majority of those present and the feedback that I got from them, is, you know, just can't go against us. He does good work. He's built some nice buildings. He has some good tenants. And again, the one thing that we will ask that is included in the variance is that no street parking permits will be given out to this building, as we have done in the past. He does have seven spaces underneath that will be used for his staff visiting and also some of the tenants that may need onsite parking. So it was very positive, and, you know, I look forward to seeing a nice-looking building, which he's done in all his other buildings, and we move ahead. So that's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do see that Bob O'Brien's here, and if he wishes to speak, I think he'll address the concerns about the parking, which is normally in his letter already. So Bob, if you wish to speak, please do so.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Bob O'Brien. I'm Director of Economic Development for the City of Revere, and I'm very pleased to stand with Counselor Novoseljki in support of this and the next project, which will come forward. We have supported variances of this type for this developer and for other projects in this district in the past, and we outlined the rationale for our support in this case in a letter that we have submitted to you. I think Carrie Anne's presentation was complete, and I think the counselor's description of the community meeting was also very to the point. I would just say, generally speaking, these two projects will create eighty-three units of badly-needed housing in the Shirley Avenue district, essentially developing vacant property with no displacement whatsoever. These units, as has been noted in previous sessions, are relatively affordable, even though they are not deed-restricted affordable housing. And I think, although it does not completely address the need for affordable housing in this district and in Revere, generally, it does make a positive contribution overall. And I might also add to the compliments for this developer that not only has he done good projects in this district, which has contributed to the revitalization of Shirley Avenue and the creation of hundreds of new units of housing and new commercial space as well, but he is also working closely with the city to support affordable housing of the type that we also need deed-restricted affordable housing. So for all of those reasons, we think this is a project that deserves these variances. They could not happen without these variances, and we very much urge you, in this case, as we will in the next one, to approve the requested zoning variances. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bob. Is there any other proponents? I see two hands raised. So we'll take first, A L Y. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Abdo.
So in not having him speak yet, we'll take the next person in line, Laura Holmes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Hi, I'm sorry. I'm not a proponent. Should I wait until the opponent?
Yes, then you should have to wait till the opponents. You're on proponents. Ally, if you are able to speak, please do so now. Okay, hearing and seeing no one else, I will close that side of the hearing. Now there any opponents? Anyone opposed? So Laura Holmes, if you're an opponent, please speak now. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Laura Holmes. I live at seventy-one Nahant Ave. I'm Ward Two. I am actually not really an opponent. I don't object to this developer. I think that Jamie is a really good guy. I know he's invested in the community. I know that all of the people with power fully support his proposals and that they will prevail. I understand how development works. I know that many people have invested time and money in these deals. I know that city councilors and city officials have had many meetings, and Jamie's team goes through an extensive process to get financing and permits, and many things happen before any deal gets closed. However, it's partly because I know that this has a lot of support that I feel it's important to go on record with a couple of issues that I think are really important to people in the community also. We all know that nearly twenty-five-hundred units of market-rate housing have been developed in just the past few years, most of it in Ward Two. Think about all the time and investment by the many people, including our elected and appointed officials, to get those twenty-five-hundred units built, sold, and rented. Meanwhile, we have no requirements for affordable housing. If just ten percent of those twenty-five-hundred new units had been truly affordable, we would have added two-hundred-and-fifty units, but instead, during that same period of time, amazingly fifty-one units of affordable housing have been built. The city of Revere's own master plan report states that over twelve-thousand households.
I'm not trying to cut you short, but this is not like a city council meeting. We're strictly here for the zoning.
Well, zoning board is where this stuff gets done. Am I, can I not use my time?
If you speak on the facts of the zoning, then fine, yes.
Well, I believe that zoning needs to take very seriously the fact that Revere has a serious dearth of affordable housing that's recognized by everyone. And if the zoning board of appeals does not see itself as having a role in the development and considerations of affordability, then who does? There's not, you know, as these individual variances come up for grabs, that keeps us from addressing the big issues. And, you know, I'm ready to start organizing for a moratorium on all housing development in this city, and there's a lot of people talking about doing that because nobody's hearing. Nobody's doing anything about affordability. I know that the mayor has ideas. I know that there's talk of an ordinance, but it's not going anywhere, and that's why I'm sticking my neck out and making some noise about this. I live in this neighborhood, and even though I don't object to Jamie, his buildings all look the same. They're changing the face of our neighborhood. I was at that meeting last week, and, and I and many of my neighbors took a little bit of offense at a characterization that their developments were going to bring in more desirable people to the neighborhood, those young professionals. You know, this, this is language that people hear in different ways, depending on your life experiences. But I'll tell you what, I love living in the Shirley Ave neighborhood. I've lived here even during times when it was considered not so great, but I know it, and I know it to be a place where people care for their homes, care for their properties, do the best they can. When properties get run down, of course, we should develop them and take care of that. But let's not display, and I know there's not immediate displacement, but the neighborhood is gentrifying. And with the lack of affordability and lack of plans to sustain affordability. And with the lack of affordability and lack of plans to sustain affordability, we're not going to preserve the character of our neighborhoods. We claim that we care about our rich diversity. Well, that's from being in a working class neighborhood. We all know that. So I just need for all of you to hear me and for other residents to hear that I feel it with you all when, when people start acting as though we're the undesirables. If the young professionals are the desirables, does that mean that the families with kids are undesirable? Does that mean the people who are working class are undesirable? Thank you for listening to me. I'm not going to object to this property. I'm going to continue to try and work for Jamie. But I'll tell you what, there's not real benefits coming to the residents of this neighborhood until we do affordable housing and guarantee it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for speaking. Is there any other opponents? Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing and hearing, now I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any members that wish to speak?
Eleven Nahant Avenue, Abdul.
Sir, are you, are you an opponent?
Yes.
Okay, I did ask if there was any opponents and you didn't speak. I'll give you the leniency. Please do so now. State your name and address for the record.
I want to say a couple of words because this thirty-eight unit will bring.
Sir, you have to state your name and address for the record. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Abdul Hassan, as the owner of eleven Nahant Avenue. And we're talking about thirty-eight unit going to bring a lot of cars in the street. There's no place to park the cars.
Okay, I'm not sure if you were hearing earlier, there's all of the leases will have no vehicles and city residential permits will not be provided to any of the leaseholders.
If no vehicle is fine, but they're going to bring thirty-eight unit, they're going to have thirty-eight car at least. There's no place to park the cars. But if no car, fine.
Alrighty. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? I see an in, please state your name and address for the record if you wish to speak as an opponent.
Yes, this is Susan Tadelman, live at forty-five Thornton Street, Revere. And that was also at a meeting last, actually, we were two meetings last week regarding, regarding this development. And, and I have many of the concerns that the first person, the, the woman two speakers ago spoke about. And particularly about affordable housing and it's not a matter of the developer. And although I am concerned that, that if it's just because the developer is, is popular, a nice guy or whatever, that it shouldn't be a popularity contest with developers that, that if he's a nice guy, that you then get to waive the, the requirements, particularly about affordable housing, because affordable housing is such a necessity. Throughout Massachusetts, I just say throughout the nation. But in particular in Revere and what, what they were saying at, at the previous meetings was that, that, oh, yes, there's affordable housing. We have, we have studio and one bedroom units starting from fifteen hundred dollars and, and then going up into the two thousands. Well, fifteen hundred dollars is not affordable housing and particularly for just a studio or one bedroom. And, and especially in Revere, and I'm not trying to denigrate Revere, but I mean, that is just not affordable housing, any way you look at it. So, excuse me, so I'm very, very concerned about the affordability of the housing for, for people who need it. And there should be affordable housing in, in any of the new developments. And, and it should really be affordable. Not just, you know, oh, we say it's affordable housing and, and it's really priced out of the range of anybody who, who needs it. And also it's, I, I'm concerned as well about this, this, yep, you're just young professional couples. And I, I know this, there's controversy about whether we should not have people with children coming into the new developments. And I, I have some, some concerns about that too, because, well, what happens if, if young couples come in and then they have children? What then? They get booted out or, you know, what, what happens with that? Even is it, isn't it discrimination not, you know, in the first place to, to not have children come in? Also, what, what happens with, with people who are in transition? For example, women who are escaping from.
Okay, I don't mean to cut you short, ma'am, but this is the zoning board of appeals. These, these topics as far as affordable housing and, and what type of clientele will be living there is not an issue that the board of appeals has any control over. I respect your.
But it is because you're making a waiver, you're making a waiver for, for.
For zoning issues, for zoning issues.
For, exactly, for zoning issues, for the developments to be, to come into Revere. And there, there is a certain amount of, of affordable housing that's, that's supposed to come in with all new developments. So that, that's a waiver that, that zoning is, is part of. So.
But we're not providing a waiver with the board of appeals, ma'am. We're not doing that. We, we have no control over affordable housing. It's not being something that we're voting on. We're not giving a waiver for it.
Aren't you waiting?
I respect your opinions, but I do have.
You're waiting for new developments, right?
Board of Appeals, not the city council or not. So I really.
You're waiting for new developments, right?
We're not doing, we're waiting for the items that are in question for side yards, height variances, but not for anything about affordable housing, which I sympathize with you. I'm, I'm, I have to be the same in full support with you, but I can't continue.
All right, let's talk about parking. You're, you're, you're waiting for parking, right?
That's one of the items that you can speak on.
Okay, then let me talk about parking. So, so that wasn't issue that, that came up at that other meeting. And, and they were saying, well, we're, we're letting in people who are going to be using the, the public transportation, which I'm all for people using public transportation, but you can't say that everybody's going to be using public transportation and nobody's going to be using cars, which you're then going to put more people using cars on the street. And not only that, what about the visitors? That's going to bring in more cars to, to the, the site. And how, and are they going to be, are they going to be allowing for enough public park, enough parking on the, the property itself? I don't think so. That it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't allow for enough parking for the amount of units that, that they said they were going to have, which is thirty-five to forty-five. They, they didn't allow for that in, in the plans that they, that they were talking about. So that's, that's one of the waves that, that you, you're talking about, that you're allowing them to come in with the development. So, so I oppose that, the, the development based upon the, the parking situation.
Okay, that we fully understand and I, thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there anyone else that wish to speak? Seeing and hearing, now I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any members that wish to speak? Then Ashley, I would ask that you read our standard conditions and we'll ask for a roll call after that.
Sure. Just a question, Chairman. Will Director Bob O'Brien's letter be incorporated as one of the conditions into the variance request into the decision? That's what usually has been done in the past. Okay, just wanted to confirm that. Thank you. So in addition to Mr. O'Brien's letter being added as a condition, the other conditions are as follows. One, if the rights authorized by this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of this variance, the rights shall lapse. Two, this variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance and plan in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds. And three, the appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit.
Mr. Chairman, Ira.
We're in a roll call, but go ahead. I'll give you a little.
I want to make sure that parking restriction is in there.
It's in Bob's letter, so if it's in Bob's letter, then it's, it's become part of the document.
Okay, thank you.
That's standard.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for bringing it up though, Ira. Okay.
Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested for thirteen Nahant Avenue in accordance with the plan on file, subject to the conditions of site plan review? Christopher Chilly. Voting yes, Mr. Lemina.
Yes.
Voting yes, Mr. Lopes.
Yes.
Voting yes, Mr. Pelton.
Yes.
Voting yes, Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Voting yes, the variance has been granted.
Our next calendar item number.
Yep, just open the pages here. Next application is A twenty-one one-six, Eastern Equity Partners LLC. Oh, I'm sorry. Eastern Equity Partners LLC, Unit Two B, Revere, Mass, requesting multiple variances of the revised ordinances of the City of Revere to enable the appellant to raise the existing structures and construct a new building comprising of forty-five residential units at sixty-sixty-six Shirley Avenue.
And I see that the attorney is present, so if you could state your name and address for the record, it would be great to be appreciated.
Once again, good afternoon, board members. My name is Carrie Anne Green. I'm an attorney with Jim Borja Brown LLP with an address of fourteen Proctor Avenue in Revere. I represent the petitioner, Eastern Equity Partners LLC, whose principal is Jamie Russo. Jamie is seeking a variance to construct a five-story contemporary structure with forty-five residential units. Again, I won't go into the detailed requested relief, but they, the specific relief is detailed in the petition that was filed with the city. This project is also in the GB district, which allows for apartment use as a right. This property is a very visible property on the corner of Shirley Avenue and Thornton Street. The current structures on the property are underutilized and largely vacant. I'm going to, once again, just share my screen to show you the current structures. Right, so this is the, the structure that's currently on sixty-sixty-six Shirley Avenue. And then behind it, there's this other auto something structure at one oh five Thornton Street. As you can see, the current structure is rundown and tired. There have also been significant safety issues here as well with criminal activity and drug arrests at the property over the last several years. There was a community meeting last week held by Jamie and the Ward Councillor, Aaron Novosolsky, which, as previously discussed, was attended by neighbors and the police chief and fire chief. The meeting went well and the, the fire chief and police chief are also in support of this project as it will address the, their safety issues for the property. The neighbors were largely excited about this project as well. And Jamie, once again, opened direct lines of communication to address any concerns that the neighbors had. So now I'm going to share with you a rendering of the proposed building. So as you can see, this would be a new contemporary building, impressive for the corner lot. Zoning relief for this building is also in line with other developments in the area. The majority of the units in this building would also be studios and one bedrooms. There's only four two-bedroom units in this, this building out of the total forty-five units. As previously discussed with working from home, a lot of people would want the second bedroom in order to accommodate home offices. And additionally, the, the two bedrooms are necessary for engineering and structural purposes. The target rents for this project would be approximately fifteen hundred to nineteen hundred dollars, which does fall into the federal affordable rent range. This project should not detract from affordable housing in the area as it will add more units to the market, which should enhance affordable rent. And as with new projects in this area, this is a transit oriented development that would be marketed to people who are interested in living near a T-stop. It's located a short six-minute walk to the Revere Beach T Station and is also located near several major bus lines. Jamie has a great reputation in the area and has renovated and improved countless other projects. And once again, this project is not going to be sold. He is going to handle the project himself. This project will have significant benefits to the city. It has the support of the city's administration, including the city's economic development director, who has once again provided a lot of support for the project. It also has the support of the Ward Councillor, Aaron Novosolsky. This is a great project for the city and we would ask for your support and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Seeing that the Ward Councillor has his hand raised, I welcome him to speak as a proponent.
Yes. Through you, the attorney, do you have any render views, side views or rear views from the proposed rendering? I don't remember seeing those.
They were in the, I believe they were in the packet in the, in the petition. Let me see if I have one.
I was just looking to see about handicap access also. Let's see that on the front view. But Mr. Chairman, while she's looking for that, if I may, the, the hearing we had was similar to what we talked about before and may say, you know, probably only there was one immediate butter that was against it and most of the butters from the hand that they have were the ones that were, you know, making comments. But in this one, there was only really one immediate butter that was ineffective that. And other than that, there were really no other, for variance purposes, there were no other people against it out of the forty-five people that spoke up anyway, let me say that. So with that, you know, the overall project looks good. And I just want to just clarify a couple of the view, views on it, if you may. Thank you. And again, also, Mr. Chairman, that the parking restriction will also be in effect for this.
That's correct. And Bob O'Brien will speak on that in a moment.
Thank you.
And that the leases will have the restriction as well.
There you go.
This is a side view of, sorry, are you? This is a side view of the property. I think there, there's also an entrance in the, the rear. It will be ADA compliant, so there shouldn't be any issues with, with anyone with a disability accessing the property.
Okay, just curious. Thank you. Thank you much.
Yeah.
Okay, seeing that's a public hearing, then I'll ask for the proponents and Mr. O'Brien, if you wish to speak.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Bob O'Brien, I'm Director of Economic Development for the City of Revere and I stand with the Ward Councillor in support of this project variance petition as well as the previous one. I will not repeat all of the rationale for so doing and it's outlined in the letter that we submitted. But I do feel the need to speak to the comments of Laura Holmes, who is the Chair of the Revere Housing Coalition and a very thoughtful and articulate advocate on behalf of affordable housing. As I think you indicated yourself, Chairman, I and the mayor, who also supports this project, is very much in support of affordable housing and understands that this project does not in and of itself make a major contribution to deed restricted affordable housing in the city. We do understand, as was made clear, as Laura indicated in the Revere Master Plan, there is a need for affordable housing, which we are working on studiously with the neighborhood developers as well as with our private development community, including Jamie Russo. So I don't want to underestimate the importance of the points that Laura Holmes made. We are in agreement with her. I think as Laura herself suggested, that is not the reason to oppose this particular project and the variances that are requested. And we do not do so, but we surely take seriously her points. They are well taken and we are seeking to, in a, in a prompt manner, address those in significant ways that will be more significant than even inclusionary zoning would have been. So we again support ZBA approval. So we, again, support ZBA approval of this petition. It will not involve any adverse impact on on-street parking, as has been noted. There is limited on-site parking on this project, as on the hand project, but no on-street parking permits will be granted to any residents of this building or indeed any of the other buildings that have improved with parking variances. So for all of those reasons, I have confidence uh that these variances will not have adverse impacts, particularly given the developer in this case, and we urge ZBA approval.
Thank you. I, any other proponents? I don't see any hands raised. Um seeing and hearing none, I will close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents? Anyone opposed? I see a hand raised um with the initials HJ. If you could state your name and address for the record, then you may speak.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Hyungji. I'm the owner of fifty-four Shirley Avenue. I do have some concern. I think so. I actually, I'm not opponent or proponent. I just have some concern regarding the neighborhood. Okay. So my concern is, number one, street parking. I know you're not going to grant any street parking for that building, but the only thing is, because that neighborhood is a very populated neighborhood, and there is not enough street parking, like uh, you know, for example, like my building, there are six uh residents, I mean, six units, but we only have street parking off-street. If any, like, anymore residents, they need parking, they have to park on the street. It it's very difficult, especially during the snow emergency, as we are, you know, in Massachusetts, we do have lots of the storm during the winter time. It's really difficult, especially, you know, during the bad weather. And sometimes, even when I go there to, you know, visit the property and inspect the property and, you know, I mean, sometimes I can find parking, sometimes I couldn't find parking. I know the building is not going to take on street parking, but they can have visitors and, you know, potentially, you know, there are people, they they might, you know, move their car in, they could like rent parking from other property owners whatsoever. That could be the truth, could be false, I don't know. All I'm seeing is uh, um if the parking situation gets tight, will that cause issue for the current residents to get a street parking permit? And to find a parking? This is number one. Number two is uh outdoor space. I understand this building is mainly like focused on those uh young professional, they might not have kids, but for the other people in the neighborhood, they do have kids. Um so my concern is that that affected their outdoor space, you know. If those issues are addressed, I'm okay with that.
Okay, thank you very much for speaking. Is there any other? Okay, I do see another um person that wishes to speak, and I believe it's Susan. No, I don't. Yes, if you could state your name and address for the record, please. Susan, if you wish to speak, please state your name and address for the record. Okay, we'll just um go to the next person. I don't see any hands raised. Is there any other opponents?
Okay, we the two of us trying to speak will be having trouble with our computers. There's Anne Steiman at forty-five Thornton Street, and I'm going to let Susan Tatum at one-eleven Thornton Street go ahead and speak first.
Okay.
Okay, um alright, I I I'm just going to reiterate my my same concern about the parking, although even more so, um one-eleven is just uh two horses, two two houses down, I'm sorry, from from where this establishment is is proposed to be, and the and this is even a more crowded, can you still hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Oh, good, okay. This is an even more crowded street, and um and again, even if you assume that that um parking permits are not going to be issued to to um folks who live who live there, they're going to get visitors. Visitors are just going to park there, you know, it's we have firsts right now. People park there without visitors, you know, without permits and um and this again, just like the person who just spoke, it is it's a very, very difficult place to to find parking as it is. This is just going to cram it up even more. And by the way, I don't know how people uh know ahead of time that are expecting, or had time that that only people who work from home are going to be occupying these units. I think that's that's um kind of Kresgen of of them. Even if even if um people say again, at the beginning, that they're going to be working from home, that doesn't mean that they're not going to change careers, they as out working elsewhere, which, again, may change their transportation um situation, which then, again, may involve another car in the in the uh in the situation. But um so anyway, that's the transportation thing, and I just want to bring up one more thing about affordable housing, because they, the attorney opened the door without, and you let her speak, and then, and I'm glad to hear that um the next person spoke, please forgive me, I don't know the names, the next person spoke um said that the the city is is trying to do significant things about affordable housing. I'm glad to hear that, but I don't know what they are. And I do know, though, that um that new developments are supposed to set aside a certain amount of of housing for affordable housing and and that in Revere, in in where it's lower-income people generally and, um you know, working class or working poor, the fifteen hundred dollars end up is not affordable housing. So um so again, I I reiterate my, oh, that's done, I re let me say, I reiterate my my position on um necessity to use affordable housing, and I I'm sure all these people are very nice people, but part of that being very nice is being aware about the problems uh in in the community. And let me bring up another thing that they they were saying about the community, that they thought that that these people um being yuppies were or, you know, young couples are going to be transient, and I would say that that we should be kind of concerned about the uh about people being um more invested in the community and and, you know, wanting to stay here and and, you know, investing something in in um how our community, you know, is and and wanting to invest in in the the property and and, you know, and and the enrichment of our community. So um so I don't think that it's a plus to thi- think that you're going to be supporting people who are transient, you know, in in these um studio or one-bedroom apartments. I would hope that you're going to be looking for people who are going to be, you know, he- here to stay for a while. So that's that's my plug for that, and again, the parking situation. Okay, thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
Yes, this is Anne Steiman. I know that the name comes of Susan Tatum, we swap computers.
No problem. If you could just state your name and address, Anne, I'd appreciate it, just for the record.
I I live at thirty-five Thornton Street, and I manage the apartments at one-eleven Thornton Street, so I do have um interest in what's happening on that block from two streets, you know, two, yeah, two different blocks in the same street. Um I guess I'd like to reiterate what Laura said and what Susan said, and also the other lady has said that, um you know, dealing with the zoning um issues, I mean, parking and also with affordable housing. Yeah, you know, I I mean, parking is a ver- is is an extreme problem in Revere on these blocks. Not everybody, you know, guests, um generally, I see, I something they see out-of-state license plates do not honor um the, you know, the parking restrictions. And I think it's going to cause more problems in in that, but would would be a month. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I don't, okay, but the rental years being around um sixteen thousand a month, someone has to earn nineteen thousand, excuse me, nineteen thousand dollars, even worse, someone has to earn at least seventy-five thousand dollars a year. That's definitely not to be able to um qualify that, you you base it on three percent uh of their income going towards rent, and that's definitely not low income or affordable income. I I I wish we had opportunity to be able to oppose it before it gets to this point. As far as zoning, you you force us to basically look at other issues like, um, you know, how much space in front of the building, or how high the building is, or how much parking it is. But but we we we're not invited to be able to address this early on, so we don't really have the forum to be able to speak for this. Yes, I do want to see new development over here, but I do want to be more inclusive for the the community who are going to stay in our community, not just transient people for you know, basically, you know, and have affordable, real affordable housing. It's never too good for affordable housing. And and that goes, and I didn't get, I tried to raise my hand on a previous property, so I say in this one also applies to one you already voted for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. There anyone else wish to speak? Any other proponents or opponent? I'm sorry, any other opponents? I do see um but the initial F, if you have, if if you wish to speak, you have your hand raised, please state your name and address for your record, for the record.
Yeah, my name is Farzahara, live in one-sixty-two Broad Street Avenue. I'm just wondering if, like, for affordable housing, I believe that most people that they need of affordable housing, that people that they have family more. I don't think like.
Okay, I'm not trying, ma'am, this is, I can sympathize with everyone on affordable housing, and I commend Laura Holmes for being the Revere Housing Coalition. Unfortunately, this is not the place to that you to be to discuss this. This is a zoning issue. I think this forum has to be taken up at another time with but
Yeah, I agree.
We have to focus on just the the zoning issues, if you don't mind, please.
Yeah, I I know, I agree. I just, I have been in two meetings, and the only thing that I found is like a studio in one bedroom. I'm like the most people that didn't really need are people who support matters, like there is people supporting the parents, people supporting their kids. I mean, where are those people can find some affordable housing? Like, if we attend that meetings like that, we're just going to just, like, let it go. That's not for us. I mean, that's my opinion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other opponents? I don't see any hands raised or anyone else that wishes to speak? I will close that side of the hearing. Any members wish to speak? Ashley, I would ask that you read into the record our conditions along with um including the Bob O'Brien's letter for the community development.
Sure. The letter dated April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, from Director Bob O'Brien, has been incorporated into this uh roll call. Further, other conditions include, one, if the rights authorized by this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of this variance, the rights shall lapse. Two, this variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance in plan in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers to the city clerk and building inspector of the City of Revere. And three, the appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit. Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested for sixty dash sixty-six Shirley Avenue in accordance with the plan on file, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review? Mr. Bichilli? Yes, Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Voting yes, this variance has been granted.
Thank you.
Okay, um Bob, if you want to take a moment just to um reiterate the administration's belief on the affordable housing, I welcome that, because this is a big topic here this evening, and I didn't mean to cut everyone off, but it's really not something that has to do with the zoning board of appeals.
Yeah, the reason that it does not have to do with the zoning board of appeals at the moment is there is no inclusionary zoning requirement in the City of Revere that requires a certain portion of the residential development being proposed to be deed-restricted affordable. An inclusionary zoning uh amendment uh to the existing zoning ordinances is being considered as one of several strategies to create new affordable housing in the community. It has not yet been implemented. It has not yet been heard and passed by the city council, so it is not, at this stage, relevant to ZBA hearings. That does not mean, however, that we are not very much dedicated to creating new affordable housing, working with our not-for-profit developers who are in the business of creating affordable housing, most specifically the neighborhood developers, otherwise known as TND. And we're working closely with them on the development of public and private properties, and with the support of our private development community, including HYM, the developers of Suffolk Downs, and private developers like Jamie Russo. It may at some point become a relevant issue for the zoning board of appeals, but it is not at the moment, because there is no inclusionary zoning requirement. There may be, but there is not yet. Whether there is or not, however, that does not diminish the commitment of the city to create in significant numbers affordable housing in the City of Revere, and there hopefully will be announcements of some specific projects in the foreseeable future. I'm not in a position to identify them yet, but I can assure you, the city, the mayor, the administration is working to that end, and I think in the end, in no small part because of the advocacy of the Revere Housing Coalition and people like Laura and her colleagues, we have been given renewed enthusiasm to accomplish this goal, and I think announcements in the foreseeable future will be uh will be responsive to what uh the Revere Housing Coalition has been promoting, and I think that will be uh quite acceptable to them.
Thank you very much, Bob. Um I want to thank everyone for participating here tonight. And I hope that they do believe they had some voice here this evening. And I now ask for a roll call to adjourn to our next meeting, which is May twenty-sixth, am I right, Ashley? May twenty-sixth?
Yes, Wednesday, May twenty-sixth, Chairman, at five o'clock.
Thank you. Okay, good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, all.